Lake County Board of Commissioners Workshop today, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'd like to go to our agenda item. We have invited and have been asked to see Commissioner Ralph Spitalary of Geauga County and former Geauga County Commissioner Skip Claypool, who serve respectively as a board member and alternate member on NOACA, the Northeast Area-Wide Coordinating Agency. And I'm probably the only person who can say that three times fast. Commissioners, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time to have us come and talk to you today. Just a quick, brief background on myself. Here, I've been a Geauga County Commissioner since two thousand and twelve. And I've been, you know, working with the whole process as far as NOACA and the alternates with NOACA. Skip has represented me as my alternate for multiple, multiple years of time that I've been serving as Commissioner. I'm going on my fourteenth year this year. So we've got a situation, you know, with Lake County where, you know, we have probably the best partnership with Lake County than any other county that's involved in the NOACA group. We've got a combined transit with you guys. Our Health Department is combined with Lake County. You know, on the law enforcement side of things, you know, our Sheriff's Office is combined with their tactical team also to be able to share services and assist us in so many ways. And I just think that the relationship that we have with Lake is far superior to any of the other counties that are involved within the NOACA. So I felt comfortable to be able to come here today to talk to you guys about a situation that we're facing, or I could actually say maybe myself individually as a Commissioner is facing in Geauga County is this. Is from the inception of the time of me taking a Commissioner's role in Geauga, we have always been placed in a position with NOACA that we can only have three Commissioners represented and not our engineer because of based on population that we have ninety-six thousand people in Geauga County that does not exceed the threshold for us to have our county engineer involved. So what we have traditionally done year after year is we have one of our Commissioner seats is basically forfeited as far as, you know, the individual Commissioner going in. What we do is we make our county engineer one of our alternates so that he is represented at the Board of NOACA. What has happened now is there's a ratification that the Director of NOACA has tried to implement and is going out to each of the counties to basically ratify this. And for each county to accept this, what they would then do is they would control that the Commissioners themselves could delegate who actually is represented and who is going to be various alternates within that organization. I feel that this is a very, you know, dangerous slope to go down. And it's a situation where it pretty much silences all three of the Commissioners per se. But if there is a situation like what I'm experiencing in Geauga County, I feel that my voice has been the minority since a newly elected Commissioner has come in January one. What has happened is this, is that I feel that the ability for me to be represented as a Commissioner down in NOACA would be totally, totally taken off the table with the chance of this being a situation that if this was ratified, that this could happen. I think that, you know, out of ninety-six thousand people that go to the polls, they have voted me in four times as Commissioner and entrusted in me to be able to make decisions within the County of Geauga to the best of their interest and to the best of the abilities of what I have and to make certain selections that I have made through the years that I think that that's part of them voting for me regularly so that they can basically get the representation that I think they want. So with that being said, I just, I think that there's, my request is this, is that one vote that basically would say no to the ratification would make this a moot point and we would be able to continue so that I would be able to still maintain, you know, representation, whether it's Skip or somebody else that I would choose, that that risk is no longer, you know, in place that I could become silenced in my representation. And there are so many critical points that NOACA deals with where there has to be a voice of reason there. There has to be people that are willing to take the hard role. And throughout the history of my time as Commissioner and the people that I have put in, they are never afraid to ask the hard question. And I would ask that please, if we can, if there's anything that we can come to an agreement on is a no vote for that ratification to just put this thing to rest. And I can't ask you guys enough to be able to do that as fellow Commissioners and, like I said, just our neighbors to Geauga County to be able to get this across the finish line. So with that, I would be willing to take any questions or anything else that you wanted to ask, willing to ask and answer anything.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions or comments?
Let me kind of give an update if you want. So you're speaking of the ratification for whatever, the five counties have to ratify the change of making it two Commissioners and an Engineer.
Yes, yes.
So to the best of my knowledge, Medina has not signed off on that, nor has Lake County. And I don't see a need to bring that up anytime soon for my two cents. We don't make decisions in these meetings. But these are conversations about things that pertain to Lake County as well. I'm on the Governance Committee, I'm on the Executive Committee as well. I also enjoy asking difficult questions down at NOACA and everywhere because I think that that's what the voters have elected us to do sometimes, is to have difficult conversations because that's what we owe them. The Governance Committee has passed a bylaw amendment, which has gone through twice now through governance. It's been approved and it went through executive to the best of my knowledge. And as I understand it, there's going to be another board meeting on the twelfth of December. And there's going to be a special scheduled meeting before that so that there could be two readings or two presentations of the bylaw amendment. The bylaws state that anything changing the membership, whether it be the specific positions, the number of positions, the formula that creates the situation that allows you to have three, Medina to have four, Lake to have five. They have a whole, you know, I'm sure they teach a course in mathematics on this formula that they have set up. And that formula, anything of that has to be ratified by all five counties. What the bylaw change has established or what it's proposing to change is that the county Commissioners and the County Executive for Cuyahoga and the Mayor of Cleveland get to determine their delegation every year. And it will also remove the requirement for ratification of those appointments, of that selection. So if one year Geauga wants to have all three Commissioners, Geauga can have all three Commissioners. The next year, they want to have two Commissioners and an Engineer, they can do that. The next year, they want to have an Engineer, a municipal representative, and a township representative, they can do that, right? Any of those changes would no longer require ratification by all five counties. Obviously, anything involving the composition, the numbers, the makeup, this distribution of the seats, that still would require. And so for the outside four county Commissioners, then they could, if Lake County has five seats, then Lake County would select who those five folks are, et cetera, et cetera. The County Executive would determine, I believe, the county, four county representatives as well as the eleven suburban mayors.
Okay.
So I don't know that what you're speaking of, that bylaw change that required five county ratification, at this point, I don't know how likely that is to pass.
Okay.
As I said, Lake County has yet to pass it. Medina County has yet to pass it. The bylaw change that I think will be voted upon in the December meeting would be, as I said, to restore the ability of the county Commissioners to determine their delegations without having to have other counties. A lot of people had a problem with the fact that what one county wants to do, another county has to ratify that. As a Lake County Commissioner, I should have no impact on what Geauga County Commissioners decide to do, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's kind of the status of where that is. I will say, at the last Governance Committee meeting, I was a dissenting voice, the only no vote for the slate of officers moving forward. The current slate of officers putting forward would result in an Executive Committee of six members. I'm relatively new to government, but in my opinion, I would think that an odd number of committee members or board members makes sense, especially when it comes to the Executive Committee at NOACA. A lot of decisions are made there. I will bring it up at the December twelfth meeting, but specifically the contract for the Executive Director, President Grace Galucci. Part of her contract moving forward next year is that the full board needs to take up the recommendation of the Executive Committee at the June board meeting. They have to make a recommendation for a couple of different things from the Executive Committee. So while I've heard some people say, well, if you don't have the majority, then just nothing moves forward. That's lazy government, in my opinion. And especially in this situation where we are required to make a recommendation to the full board, having a six-member Executive Committee does not bode well, in my opinion. The bylaws specifically establish six officers and a seat for the Mayor of the largest city in the five-county region, in this case, is going to be Cleveland. So the Mayor of Cleveland position automatically has a seat, an Executive Committee. But when the Mayor of Cleveland is part of the officers, is when the numbers get wonky. And my proposal was to remove the Mayor of Cleveland from the rotation of officers and to add in one of the eleven suburban Cuyahoga County Mayors into the rotation of officers, which would then give us seven members because you have to have one member from each county. And the Mayor cannot count for that county's representative. So simple math tells you you either have five or seven. And if you have five members of your committee, then if the Mayor is part of that, then it only leaves four seats. So that's what I've tried to advocate for, and I was shut down. I was the no vote. They also, the Mayor's representative explained that they would like to have the Mayor appoint a delegate or the Mayor appoint a not-elected official to serve as Chair of the Board next year. I'm not in favor of that. I do not think that NOACA, while there are a lot of amazing people on that board that do a lot of great work, I don't dispute that. And those folks may or may not be elected. And some of the not-elected folks, I get it, are experts in their field that we need on that board. But I think that NOACA, at the end of the day, is just chopping up taxpayer dollars. The government does not produce money. They make, the federal government prints it. But we at this organization are just allocating taxpayer dollars. And that's the sole function, in my opinion, they do some studies and other things, to facilitate the allocation of taxpayer dollars into the member communities. And I feel that the member communities should have elected officials as the officers of that organization. I said that a bunch of times, somehow that didn't get across. And I had somebody come up to me afterwards and say, oh, what do you mean by this, this, this? And I explained it once again. And they said, funny enough, in two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten, the Board passed a resolution to make sure that only elected officials could serve as either Chair or on the Executive Committee or Officers. And that resolution was passed boardwide, but it did not get implemented because Cuyahoga County did not ratify it. And so there's going to be some uncomfortable, difficult conversations. My recommendation had nothing to do with the current Mayor of Cleveland. It has nothing to do personally. I think that I had the Cuyahoga County Executive continually questioning me what my intent was. I think it messes with people's minds when you make suggestions that don't benefit yourself in politics. I have no reason, I just wanted something that was more fair and better representing to the folks. And so I say that because, yes, we're having some honest and sometimes uncomfortable conversations at the lack of the Board composition, making sure that all the communities feel fair, fairly represented and heard. And I think that these conversations will continue into December and then leading to what happens in, you know, seating of the Board next year. But I don't know that the issue that you're speaking of with the ratification, I don't know that that's going to be a top priority for the organization or either of the other two counties. And that's just my opinion as one county Commissioner.
So if I could ask you a question, so on, from what you're seeing as far as that bylaw change, does that bylaw change still give me the ability as an individual Commissioner to be able to stand and hold my ability of selecting my own, you know, delegate to be able to be my representative there? Or does that give, with that bylaw change, is it strictly something that, you know, two out of three can basically decide who my alternate would be?
It would not be your alternate, but in theory, two out of the three Commissioners could decide that you're not even a board member at NOACA. That in theory, if two of the three Commissioners said, we're going to appoint these three people, Commissioner A, Commissioner B, and the Engineer, then those would be the three board members. And then those three board members would designate their alternates. So to your point, if remaining a board member at NOACA is a priority, then the county Commissioners of each county would have to get together. I believe we've established, we have a, what is the reorganization meeting in January, where we determine who's the delegate on this board, who's the representative on that board. At that time, I don't know the Cuyahoga County model, but I assume the other counties are similar to ours, is when the county Commissioners of Medina, Lorraine, Geauga, and Lake would appoint their delegation or determine their delegation. And it would be an annual process.
Okay. So in a nutshell, then, basically what we're talking about as far as with this ratification, it's basically going to be built into this bylaw change. If I'm understanding this correct, that at the end of the day, my position could be silenced, that two out of the three Commissioners could make the determination that the Engineer is going to be represented. I'm basically put to the side and the other two Commissioners could be represented.
In theory, yes.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, as we have these difficult conversations, then now it becomes, that becomes, as you all too well know, since being a Commissioner for the last thirteen years, that becomes then a political conversation.
Yeah.
If the people of the county aren't happy with the behaviors of the other two Commissioners for their decisions, then that's the mechanism by which that issue could be addressed.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, I guess at this point in time, then, if that's the direction that it's going, maybe the point is moot. But I guess to, you know, I guess I look at it as if the ratification would have a no vote, if that would have any impact on some of the bylaw changes. I think it's a bad change because at the end of the day, when you look at what Geauga is facing with three positions, my voice is pretty much silenced. And it's a tough scenario to be there because it's so important for us to have good representation there. And if you have the ability of being silenced and to have a different agenda, it's truly not a fair and balanced system when you look at it across the board. And I think that that bylaw change really is, you know, it's a shot at Geauga primarily out of anybody because of the fact that we only have three. And it's sad to hear that that may be the direction that we're unfortunately going to be in. And I think that, you know, I stand with you today to say, you know, I've been a huge advocate to get out of NOACA completely at some point in time. And it's maybe a conversation that I think that we need to have. I don't know exactly where the other two Commissioners in Geauga would stand right now. But I think that it's something that, you know, officially, I will tell you that I one hundred percent agree that something needs to change. And, you know, I think that it's taken such a different turn as far as for us to be able to go through for our transportation dollars. It's become this network of every other political hot-button topic that they continue to bring up that has nothing to do with transportation. And they want to try to, you know, control this dialogue. And it's just, it's not my beliefs, and I can tell you that it is not the beliefs of the majority of the residents of Geauga County that want that. And I would tell you, that's probably what you're seeing in Lake County, too. They don't want to hear about, you know, walking trails down in the city of Cleveland or, you know, naturescapes. They want to hear, they want to be able to drive on good roads. And when you look at what Lake County brings to the table, especially, I mean, you guys have an incredible amount of dollars that are going into the gas taxes and going there, that I would say, sure, you guys had that Brumman Road project, which was a big number that came out of it. We had our buggy trail. But if we really looked at what you are bringing to the table, what Geauga is bringing to the table, we're not getting back our dollars of what's going into that coffer. But it's rather, it's going outside into primarily Cuyahoga County. And I am open one hundred percent to talk to you guys further about that. And I would tell you that if I could sign by the X today to get out of NOACA, I would, so.
Within months of taking this position, I started asking those questions myself. I've had conversations at the state level, I've had conversations at the federal level. My position has been, if I thought that there was a way to maintain the same amount of dollars flowing into this county, if not improve it, then I will absolutely explore any opportunity that comes with that. I came to realize that to change out of an MPO is an extremely difficult task. Now, there is some legislation that's been presented at the state level. We'll see what happens with that, with that process. I took the approach that at this time, if we could make some improvements at NOACA, then let's try and do that as compared to pulling out of NOACA, so to speak. But to your point, there's only so many things that we can do as having three board members or five board members. I voted against, I believe, the first time that I had it explained to me that they were developing an economic development arm, I voted for that. But then the more research I did, when they finally had to do the economic development, I voted against it. I do not need to go through NOACA for my economic development needs. We have an amazing economic development team here in Lake County. We have an amazing director, and I have the utmost confidence in those folks. And I don't have a problem going down to Washington or going down to Columbus talking about the economic development opportunities that I need here. In my opinion, an MPO or these organizations should be for advocacy and studies. And the thing I've learned is you don't do anything in government without a study. I get it, I understand. But if those studies could be done without having to go through five other counties or four other counties to get our economic development dollars, and that I think is part of the frustration with many at NOACA, is that what started off as a transit organization has gone far beyond that, whether it be environmental issues, whether it be economic development issues. And so the structure in one case is based on this, and another case is based on this, and we do it this way because of this law and that way because of that law. And I think that we do require some help from our federal and state officials to clarify some of this. But to your point, the moment I can get one extra dollar in this county, I'll sign right after your name.
Yep, yep. And I think the other thing is, is I think some of these studies that they have done have also, you know, been directed in a way that the results that are brought, you know, to the table, I think are swayed in one way or another, you know. And you can look at anything and come up with the end result of looking a certain way. And it's all about who's in place to be able to look at that. And sometimes you don't have a complete transparent objective, you know, of looking at it. So, but no, I appreciate the time. Skip, was there anything you would like to add?
Would you mind?
Sure, if it would be okay for you guys, thank you. Appreciate you guys taking the time.
I know you've got a hard stop today, but let me offer you this, Mr. Beveridge. When I was a Commissioner, I worked with ODOT and developed a cost model on a Lake County, Geauga County MPO. Twenty-three CFR four fifty-three-ten describes the process for separating from an MPO. It's a very straightforward process, it's not difficult. It's a matter of having an agreement between the two communities, Geauga County, Lake County, having the largest city buy into that and having the governor sign it. Now, that's the most difficult part, possibly having your largest city approve of it. But I can tell you, and ODOT helped me to develop the cost model, that we leave, would leave NOACA with more money than what you get today. And when you're an MPO, you qualify for the big-ticket items like the Brumman Road Project. I would love to sit down with you, and I will sit down with you when you come back from your trip. And I'll show you the cost model, I'll show you the law on how you do it. It's not that, it's a straightforward process. That said, having sat on the Board for quite a while and been involved in looking at NOACA for a long time, now sitting on the Board again as Ralph's alternate, and I appreciate that. I know NOACA pretty well, I know their practices and so forth. I was here when Grace Galucci first came on Board. She changed things dramatically. The only reason we have membership by population is because of the bylaws. Cleveland, Cuyahoga County was successful at suing, beating us up, gnashing our teeth, whatever, to convince the communities to buy into this whole population thing. The law does not say that we have to do it by population. And I've said this in an open public meeting in NOACA. In essence, the starting point could be every county has a county commissioner and whatever. They could develop a set of bylaws and adjust the bylaws to address that. They choose not to because they want to maintain that control and that power. That's their objective, control and power. If we do away with this ratification process, that is the only firewall right now we've got to protect the counties. The minute you give up that ratification process, you now lose your firewall and all bets are off. Cleveland and Cuyahoga County now have total control of the Board and anything that they want to do, they can do. Last Friday in the Finance Committee, we voted to give funding to a developer for fair housing on the west side of Cleveland. That has nothing to do with roads and bridges, has nothing to do with an MPO. But as you stated earlier, they're getting into all these other things, and we're just going along for a ride. They ask us to be involved with the decision process so they can get some sort of, you know, tacit agreement, oh, all the counties agree to economic development. They've not proven to me that they have any understanding of what economic development is all about. And they certainly don't appreciate economic development as it applies to Lake County, Geauga County, Lorraine County, and so on and so forth. As Ralph had said, and I think eloquently, a vote no to this ratification process, it's a distraction right now. And between now and the reorganization meeting after the first of the year, there's going to be a lot more pressure applied by NOACA to ratify the requested change. I'm going to suggest that the best order of business is just to remove that distraction. Take that off the table, a vote no to that ratification, a formal vote no, sends a message to NOACA, no, we are not playing that game. Each county Commissioner was elected to serve their population. And if one of those Commissioners, unless he elects to remove himself, is taken off that Board, then the voters now lose their voice. They chose three Commissioners. They didn't choose three Commissioners and a county engineer. They chose three Commissioners to be on that Board. The original NOACA contract was three Commissioners from every county and the Mayor of Cleveland. All of these other ancillary offices, the Mayors and the Township Trustees and blah, 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 were never part of the contemplation of the federal law. And if you look it up, twenty-three CFR four fifty-three-ten, you'll see that the requirement of that federal law to establish MPOs was people that represent at least seventy-five percent of the population. Our county engineer doesn't represent seventy-five percent of the population from a political standpoint. He's an engineer elected by the majority of the population in your community, but to take care of roads. County Commissioners are elected to take care of business. And the business of NOACA is what the county Commissioners... And the business of Nowaka is what the county commissioners are there to serve. So I would suggest two things, first of all, I'd love to sit down and go over the cost model with you, because I can show you. Where Lake County would benefit significantly, dollar wise, plus culturally, we're sister and brother. One time we were all together, and then we split decades ago.
Eighteen forty.
Yeah, thank you. And so, we're very close in terms of.
It was a long horse right now to sharpen, I mean, it's beautiful, it's town square, but come on.
Yeah, and so, you know, we, we are already, you know. Shirt-tail cousins, so to speak, it would make perfect sense for us to form an MPO, work together, because we would do a much better job culturally. And manage the money better, and we could convince the governor that it's going to be way better for our populations. At the end of the day, because, um, it, it would serve our communities better. Cleveland and Cuyahoga County can go bury themselves in their progressive, um, ideology that they, that they want to promote and, and just let them. Have at it and prove, you know, what they, what they do. So with that, I, I welcome this opportunity.
One last thing I wanted to say is the firewall that you referenced, the ratification process. As the bylaw amendment is being presented. The, the removal of the ratification process by all five counties. Is only pertaining to the sections that talk about the county commissioners appointing.
It's, 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 no, it's, it's the whole section four, which is, which is membership, the board membership.
We rewrote it at the last governance committee after you left finance.
Right.
We rewrote that to specifically only talk about. Sections B and C, I think A was the formula for how the board membership is comprised, the different sections, yada, yada. After that, B and C, that has to deal with who within the delegation, who within the county is being appointed. And that specific part is the only part that is removing the ratification, so that therefore. Lake County commissioners decide, the other four counties don't have a chance to overrule. So the overall composition of the board still has to be ratified by all five counties. The numbers, the positions, the formula has to be ratified by all five counties still, even after this should, if it does pass, even after that. The only part that we're removing the ratification process on, and this, like I said, is different. The governance, in that governance committee, we spent, I don't know, about an hour rewriting what the amendment was going to be, which is why it's going to be presented again. Another time before it goes, so, I just wanted, because you brought up that point, and I do not want that. I do not want to remove the ratification process as it relates to the total number of board seats, or the formula, or anything like that. I understand that that is, uh, that is not in the best interest of the county, so, I just wanted to hopefully reassure you that we made the changes.
So that. Yep, if I heard you correctly, you're giving the authority of two commissioners. Who basically could be one commissioner, so generally, two commissioners might line up against a third commissioner, and that third commissioner now doesn't have a voice. You've just removed the voice of that third commissioner, and I, and I.
I don't dispute that, that's politics, right? And then the next time, we're up, we're up every two years, one of us is up every two, four, you know, I mean, we rotate. And if that's the case, and the people have a, a, a chance to decide, and once again, this isn't permanently putting that allocation in. Right, it's changed every year. If a new commissioner or two new commissioners get on board and want to change up what it is, great. So it offers the flexibility, I get that unfortunately, in this situation, you might have two commissioners that wish to silence a third. Well, that to me is the campaign that you run on then, so.
Well, and, and what you suggest, I'll, I'll, I'll give you that for the sake of argument, and I personally hope it fails, but, um. Then it does no harm to vote down the current. Issue on the table, and that's the ratification requested by Jug County, so vote it down and then see where this goes, and that's whatever suggests so.
So number one, I agree with voting down the proposal from Giaga County to. Effectively boot Commissioner Spitalary from Nowaka. I was disappointed that a dispute from Giaga County was effectively put in front of. You know, every other county in the Nowaka region, I don't think that's something that we should be voting on, I don't think that's. Something that any of us wanted to vote on, so I'm certainly in favor of voting no on that proposal. Uh, twenty-three CFR four fifty three ten, you said, uh, Madam Prosecutor, I would be very grateful. If the prosecutor's office could provide an opinion to us on exactly what it would take for Lake County to leave Nowaka. Because we've had differing interpretations over time, and I'd like to have. A solid understanding of what it would take for Lake County to leave Nowaka. And create a new MPO by itself or with another county. Uh, that way we have objective legal advice on what our options are, because we've talked about this forever. And I think that most of us would leave if we could, but we have varying interpretations of what it would take to leave. And while I don't think Governor DeWine would be much inclined. To allow anyone to leave any MPO, we are certainly going to have a new governor next time around because of term limits. And the new, the next governor, the new governor may be more open to that possibility, so. Uh, I would ask the prosecutor's office to provide us with that opinion, so that we can seriously consider what our legal options are.
So let, let me offer you this, because I have asked, not wanting my opinion to, as not an attorney, uh, to sway things. Um, I've asked our state legislature to give me that opinion, and our LLCs and our state legislature gave me that opinion. I asked Bernie Marino's staff to give me their opinion, they gave me that opinion, and it's consistent, both of them basically said the same thing. And if you read the law, it's very simple, it's very straightforward, uh, it's pretty clear to see, and I would, if you give me your contact information, I'll forward to you. The LLC's response to my request for, um, an interpretation of, of how you do this, and by the way, I asked ODOT. Back when I was a commissioner, when I was developing the cost model, what does it take to do this, I have ODOT's response to me. That says, this is your approach and this is how you do it. So I have the state legislature, Bernie Marino, our state Senator, US Senator, and I have ODOT's response. So I'm pretty confident as I stand here before you today, saying, I think I know, because all these people who are smarter than me told me what it takes to do this. And that's why we started the process when I was a commissioner, uh, at that time, you're the Lake County engineer and our. Uh, Giaga County engineer were forming an agreement, creating an agreement to start the process and explore, because, you know, it's a process. And so, anyway, I'll offer you that, if I had your, your contact information, I could forward you that material. So, thank you, I appreciate your opportunity for to do so.
So, are you gonna, are you gonna yell at Dave Hackman for missing this meeting?
So any further questions, comments? Hearing none, I will adjourn this work session at eleven oh eight.